Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, July 31st, 2024. We are convened for a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to consider two resolutions. The first is declaring a resolution declaring a local disaster emergency related to the Alexander Mountain Fire. The second resolution is to consider declaring fire restrictions in Larimer County. My name is John Kafalas, Commissioner from District One. I'm joined by my Commissioner colleagues, Kristen Stevens from District Two, Jody Shattuck-Mcnally from District Three, and of course, we have our County Manager, Lorenda Volker. And a number of folks are assembled here in the Commissioners' Conference Room. Lorenda, unless there's something you'd like to say, we'll move on to Sheriff Feyen.
Okay. So do we do a man this?
Sheriff Feyen, if you would be kind enough to introduce yourself for the record and provide us with a bit of an update on how things are going and how everyone is taking care of themselves as best as they can.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. My name is John Feyen, and I am the Larimer County Sheriff. Last name is Epheson Frank, E-Y-E-N. So, do you want me to talk? Okay. So, the fire continues to progress, and not in a positive direction. So, we triggered evacuations, mandatory evacuations of the Dunraven Glade about an hour ago, which includes the retreat. That does not include parts of Glenhaven, but it's, those are involuntary at this point. We have fire encroaching upon residential structures up in the Palisade Mountain Cedar, Cedar Cove area, unfortunately. We do still have crews that are up there. Last acreage count that we had, we had the multi-mission aircraft fly over us probably about 1:30 this afternoon, and that gave us, through heat mapping, an acreage count of 6,780 acres roughly. I may be off a little bit about that, but it's the upper 6,000 acre range. So, you've seen a fire progression from zero at 10:19 Monday morning, or 10:39 Monday morning, to almost 7,000 acres in a 48-hour period. People are tired, they're dirty, they're hot, they're sweaty, but they are motivated to keep the public safe. And so far, as far as I know, it's, while they're very important, we've just only lost trees and grasses. We have not, to my knowledge, lost any structures of any sort, nor have we lost any vehicles of any sort. I keep hearing rumors about a trailer that may have been lost, but that's, I don't know that. And also, as far as I know, no human lives have been lost, which is probably the most important. So, that's kind of the status now. We will transition. We have a Type III team from the Forest Service that's in doing incident command with us currently. I have some documentation for the state, assume some jurisdiction as well, just before midnight last night. And we have a complex incident management team from the federal government, which is an elevation from the Type III. And Type III's been wonderful, don't get me wrong, but it's just, this gives us access to more resources, including hot shots and larger aircraft and more feet on the ground and those kinds of things. But they are coming in, we're doing our in-brief this evening, which is just the outgoing team getting, briefing them out about what's been going on and giving them the commander's intent from the aspect of the county, the sheriff's office, OEM, and what's been done so far. That happens at 6:00 PM tonight, and they will take official control. It's a Southwest team out of Arizona, New Mexico, that is, will be sub-commander at 6 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome, sir.
I think we have a little bit of time. Would you be willing to entertain any questions from the Commissioners?
I would welcome them, please, yes.
Commissioner Stevens, do you have any questions at this time?
Well, thank you, Sheriff. Just thank you to you and your folks who are working on the fire. We know it's hard work, and you're hot and sweaty, as you said, amongst other things, I'm sure. Can you talk a little bit about how the other, the other fires, so the fire that was around the Lyons area, are they, have they met? Are they, I mean, is some of, some of that is in Larimer County, I think, but maybe not? Can you just talk just briefly about that?
Absolutely. And that's a great question, because this is going to play into one of the things that are County Attorney and I were talking about in a minute. So, the Stone Canyon Fire is on the southern border of Larimer County. Right now, the entirety, the fire is in Boulder County. However, when they triggered their evacuation polygons, there's a section of Larimer County Blue Mountain that you only get to by going through Boulder. And so, it triggered evacuations for folks in Larimer County as well. So, yesterday, we went out and did those notifications that they are under a mandatory evacuation for that. The, as of, fortunately, I was at a press conference with the Governor and with my fellow Sheriff Curtis Johnson down there, last acreage count we have from that fire is 1,580 acres. They have some degree of containment, the fuel mixtures are a little bit, are different than what we have here, the terrain's different than what we have here, so they're actually able to get what they call wet engines, so engines that carrying water onto the scenes with their, with their hand crews. However, they have lost five structures, and there is a fatality in that fire, in one of the structures. So, as I was pulling up, I was texting my friend Sheriff Johnson from Boulder County, and said, "Hey, my friend, I heard you have, you have another fire going on." And he confirmed that that is the case. If you'll allow me to look real quick.
It's around Gross Reservoir, if I'm correct.
That's exactly what, yes, that's what it's called. Gross Reservoir, there's two houses involved, and wildfire mixture as well. Additionally, there's the Quarry Fire, which is going on, I believe in Jefferson County, and, and that's also struck, threatening some structures. The nice part is, so this is, so this is bad, right? In the entirety of the Front Range of Colorado, we were seeing hot, dry, windy conditions that are, that are increasing the risk of fire to the community. It's also taking resources. Now, there's a good and a bad to that, right? So, we have this critical incident management team that is coming on site. Right now, they are going to manage both the Alexander, our fire, and they're going to manage the fire in Boulder County at the same time. So, they're going to be, I apologize, that's been going off all day, I should turn it off. So, they're going to address both of those fires, and we've been sharing area assets all day long. Sounds like we're able to get that one out, those out there, and the Quarry Fire out, hopefully, before ours takes off anymore, and then we can devote full resources to that. But we have great federal partners in that space. The problem is, is that, and I'm learning this from my conversations from folks like Lori and from Energy Services, there's called a preparedness level at the local level and at a national level, and it's a one-to-five scale. And it is kind of like golf. The higher the score, the worse you're in. And right now, we're at a national preparedness level of five, which is the highest you get, which means that there are a lot of, a lot of fires, complexes going on, and resources are spread very, very thinly. Our local preparedness level, I don't know exactly what that is, but a couple of weeks ago was at a three, and I would anticipate, I will tell you from Larimer County's aspect, we're at a five as well. If we had another fire breakout in Red Feather Lakes or some other part of Larimer County, we'd be hard-pressed to address the needs of that fire without pulling resources from the Alexandria Mountain Fire as well. So, that's where they would come from.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shattuck-Mcnally, do you have any questions for the Sheriff?
Yes, I do, thank you. So, a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
I know I've been around, so I have heard a lot of the updates. So, I just want to clarify and go back to the Blue Mountain, or the Stone Canyon, but the Blue Mountain. So, that is, I mean, I can see that from my house, it's kind of getting close to, you know, kind of up towards Carter Lake and kind of that, that, all of those preserved lands we have. I know they stopped operations at the Big Chimney Hollow Dam and that, and we've, we've closed all of Carter Lake, is that correct?
No, Carter Lake is open, is my understanding. We've shut down Horse Tooth for aircraft operations.
So, is it just the homes around the north end of Carter Lake that are evacuated, but the rest of Carter Lake is open?
That is correct.
Okay.
We've evacuated, or done notice evacuations up to County Road 18E.
Okay, great, thank you. And I heard something today at the press, like, I exited the press conference a little early, but at our, the Command Center, I think you might have mentioned this, but it looks like this could be a few weeks of operations for this fire. That was kind of the first time I heard those numbers. Can you just expand on that and maybe tell us all a little more about that, because that caught my attention?
No, absolutely, and that's a great question, Commissioner. So, the Forest Service has predictive models, and they have an acronym for them that I'm unfamiliar with, so I'm not going to even begin to try to call, call it what it is, but it looks at resources available, it looks at weather forecasts, it looks like at the trade, it looks at a multitude, and it gives you percentages, you know, from the 50th percentile likelihood of where the spread will be, as well as how long it will contain it, to the, all the way out to the 0.2% likelihood of growth and containment. So, right now, those models, as of last night, were showing that there's a 50% likelihood that this is at least a five-to-six week event, so about a 50-day event, with a less than 10%, but still a possibility of being a multi-month event that would take us into October, November. The biggest part of that, and our biggest concern, and I'm happy to talk about infrastructure priorities as well, if it jumps Highway 34, that's going to trigger, and we can't get to it in time to put that, that, that spot out, and it continues to spread, that is going to trigger a lot of evacuations down in the Berthold area, as well as, because there's a lot of unburned fuels. We have Cameron Peak Burn Scar, we have the Bobcat Ridge Burn Scar, that will actually help us out with this fire, if we can get it to go that direction. But we, we don't, we have a lot of unburned fuels south
So, do you want me to talk? Okay. So, the fire continues to progress and not in a positive direction. So, we triggered evacuations, mandatory evacuations of the Dunraven Glade about an hour ago, which includes the retreat. That does not include parts of Glen Haven, but it's, those are involuntary at this point. We have fire encroaching upon residential structures up in the Palisade Mountain Cedar, Cedar Cove area, unfortunately. We do still have crews that are up there. Last acreage count that we had, we had the multi-mission aircraft fly over us probably about 1:30 this afternoon, and that gave us, through heat mapping, an acreage count of 6,780 acres roughly. I may be off a little bit about that, but it's, it's in the upper 6,000 acre range. So, you've seen a fire progression from zero at 10:19 Monday morning, or 10:39 Monday morning, to almost 7,000 acres in a 48-hour period. People are tired, they're dirty, they're hot, they're sweaty, but they are motivated to keep the public safe. And so far, as far as I know, it's, while they're very important, we've just only lost trees and grasses. We have not, to my knowledge, lost any structures of any sort, nor have we lost any vehicles of any sort. I keep hearing rumors about a trailer that may have been lost, but that's, I don't know that. And also, as far as I know, no human lives have been lost, which is probably the most important. So, that's kind of the status now. We will transition. We have a Type III team from the Forest Service that's in doing incident command with us currently. I have some documentation for the state, assume some jurisdiction as well, just before midnight last night. And we have a complex incident management team from the federal government, which is an elevation from the Type III. And Type III's been wonderful, don't get me wrong, but it's just, this gives us access to more resources, including hot shots and larger aircraft and more feet on the ground and those kinds of things. But they are coming in, we're doing our in-brief this evening, which is just the outgoing team getting, briefing them out about what's been going on and giving them the commander's intent from the aspect of the county, the sheriff's office OEM, and what's been done so far. That happens at 6:00 PM tonight, and they will take official controls. It's a Southwest team out of Arizona, New Mexico, that is, will be sub-commander at 6 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome, sir.
I think we have a little bit of time. Would you be willing to entertain any questions from the Commissioner?
I would welcome them, please, yes.
Commissioner Stevens, do you have any questions at this time?
Well, thank you, Sheriff. Just thank you to you and your folks who are working on the fire. We know it's hard work and you're hot and sweaty, as you said, amongst other things, I'm sure. Can you talk a little bit about how the other, the other fires, so the fire that was around the Lyons area, are they, have they met? Are they, I mean, is some of, some of that is in Laramo County, I think, but maybe not? Can you just talk just briefly about that?
Absolutely, and that's a great question, because this is going to play into one of the things that are, County Attorney and I were talking about in a minute. So, the Stone Canyon Fire is on the southern border of Laramo County. Right now, the entirety, the fire is in Boulder County. However, when they triggered their evacuation polygons, there's a section of Laramo County Blue Mountain that you only get to by going through Boulder. And so, it triggered evacuations for folks in Laramo County as well. So, yesterday, we went out and did those notifications that they are under a mandatory evacuation for that. The, as of, fortunately, I was at a press conference with the governor and with my fellow sheriff, Curtis Johnson, down there. Last acreage count we have from that fire is 1,580 acres. They have some degree of containment, the fuel mixtures are a little bit, are different than what we have here, the terrain's different than what we have here, so they're actually able to get what they call wet engines, so engines that carrying water onto the scenes with their, with their hand crews. However, they have lost five structures, and there is a fatality in that fire, in one of the structures. So, as I was pulling up, I was texting my friend Sheriff Johnson from Boulder County, and said, "Hey, my friend, I heard you have, you have another fire going on." And he confirmed that that is the case. I don't know if you'll allow me to look real quick.
It's around Gross Reservoir, if I'm correct.
That's exactly what, yes, that's what it's called. Gross Reservoir, there's two houses involved, and wildfire mixture as well. Additionally, there's the Quarry Fire, which is going on, I believe in Jefferson County, and, and that's also struck, threatening some structures. The nice part is, so this is, so this is bad, right? In the entirety of the Front Range of Colorado, we were seeing hot, dry, windy conditions that are, that are increasing the risk of fire to the community. It's also taking resources. Now, there's a good and a bad to that, right? So, we have this critical incident management team that is coming on site. Right now, they are going to manage both the Alexander, or our fire, and they're going to manage the fire in Boulder County at the same time. So, they're going to be, I apologize, that's been going off all day, I should have turned it off. So, they're going to address both of those fires, and we've been sharing area assets all day long. It sounds like we're able to get that one out, those out there, and the Quarry Fire out, hopefully, before ours takes off anymore, and then we can devote full resources to that. But we have great federal partners in that space. The problem is, is that, and I'm learning this from my conversations from folks like Lori and from Emergency Services, there's called a preparedness level at the local level and at a national level, and it's a one-to-five scale. And it is kind of like golf. The higher the score, the worse you're in. And right now, we're at a national preparedness level of five, which is the highest you get, which means that there are a lot of, a lot of fires, complexes going on, and resources are spread very, very thinly. Our local preparedness level, I don't know exactly what that is, but a couple of weeks ago was at a three, and I would anticipate, I will tell you from Laramo County's aspect, we're at a five as well. If we had another fire breakout in Red Feather Lakes or some other part of Laramo County, we'd be hard-pressed to address the needs of that fire without pulling resources from the Alexandria Mountain Fire as well. So, that's where they would come from.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shadak Ruknelli, do you have any questions for the Sheriff?
Yes, I do, thank you. So, a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
I know I've been around, so I have heard a lot of the updates. So, I just want to clarify and go back to the Blue Mountain, or the Stone Canyon, but the Blue Mountain. So, that is, I mean, I can see that from my house, it's kind of getting close to, you know, kind of up towards Carter Lake and kind of that, that, all of those preserved lands we have. I know they stopped operations at the, the Big Chimney Hollow Dam and that, and we've, we've closed all of Carter Lake, is that correct?
No, Carter Lake is open, is my understanding. We've shut down the horse tooth for aircraft operations.
So, is it just the homes around the north end of Carter Lake that are evacuated, but the rest of Carter Lake is open?
That is correct.
Okay.
We've evacuated, or done notice evacuations up to County Road 18E.
Okay, great, thank you. And I heard something today at the press, like, I exited the press conference a little early, but at our, the Command Center, I think you might have mentioned this, but it looks like this could be a few weeks of operations for this fire. That was kind of the first time I heard those numbers. Can you just expand on that and maybe tell us all a little more about that, because that caught my attention?
No, absolutely, and that's a great question, Commissioner. So, the Forest Service has predictive models, and they have an acronym form that I'm unfamiliar with, so I'm not going to even begin to try to call it what it is, but it looks at resources available, it looks at weather forecasts, it looks like at the terrain, it looks at a multitude, and it gives you percentages, you know, from the 50th percentile likelihood of where the spread will be, as well as how long it will to contain it, to the, all the way out to the 0.2% likelihood of growth and containment. So, right now, those models, as of last night, were showing that there's a 50% likelihood that this is at least a five-to-six week event, so about a 50-day event, with a less than 10%, but still a possibility of being a multi-month event that would take us into October, November. The biggest part of that, and our biggest concern, and I'm happy to talk about infrastructure priorities as well, if it jumps Highway 34, that's going to trigger, and we can't get to it in time to put that, that, that spot out, and it continues to spread, that is going to trigger a lot of evacuations down in the Berthet area, as well as, because there's a lot of unburned fuels. We have Cameron Peak Burn Scar, we have the Bobcat Ridge Burn Scar, that will actually help us out with this fire, if we can get it to go that direction. But we, we don't, we have a lot of unburned fuels south of Highway 34, and there's a lot of critical infrastructure, especially for the community of Estes Park, that we're going to work really hard to protect.
Mr. Chair, just a last question. It seems like FEMA, Region Eight, and maybe you're going to mention this, but I'm just, am I jumping the gun? I just, I-
I don't know what your question is, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just authorizing, Congressman DeGuss let me know they're authorizing the use of the FMAG resources for the, so is that something you're going to talk about? Okay, so I just want to make sure we understand that, because this is a multi-jurisdiction, and the beginning of this fire was a lot of resources from Laramo County, and so I'm just trying to, we're very concerned about safety, health, and welfare in people's lives, but we also have to be concerned about how much this costs for suppression. We've talked about why mitigation's so much cheaper than suppression and recovery. So, I think that's something we have to kind of think of, of what, where, how much this costs, and where is this going, especially if it's going to, the reason I asked for the multi-week event, that's a long time of resources and just kind of understanding what, what that looks like, and I hate to put a price tag on it, because it's really important. Our wildlife, our landscapes are priceless, and our homes and life, and, and human life is priceless, but I just wanted to kind of talk-
Let me, yeah, well, and I'll have Lori fill in, right? But again, part of that modeling is what they think it's going to cost, and right now they're talking about $80 million to do that. We spent probably, and this is just a rough estimate based upon top-of-hood conversations we've had at the command post, in the first 48 hours with aircraft assets only, we've probably spent close to $2.5 million, maybe $2.8 million. Right now, we're working on the cost-share agreement with the Forest Service, and we're at a 90-10. They wanted us to pay 90, and we said, "No, it's probably better if you paid 90," and so that's kind of where we're at with that, even though the deal hasn't been inked yet. However, we will be responsible for all the, like, Sylvandale land usage and the resources and food and supplies and stuff like that, that we asked for on the initial days to support staff. And of course, there's going to be, there's going to be overtime costs at the sheriff's office and things like that, that we're going to ask for. Lori, please fill in.
So-
I, no, because I have no idea what that is necessarily, so you caught me off-guard.
That's okay. Thank you, go ahead.
Timeout. I'd like to ask one question, please.
Yes, please.
And then we can shift to you, Lori, and you can provide more details about the federal assistance grants, the, and that is, when the fire started on Monday, I understood that we were, probably because of the terrain, the location of the fire, we were only deploying air resources. Have we been able to deploy ground crews, firefighters on the ground to actually attack the fire directly, or what's happening with that? And did we, were we able to bring in hot-shot firefighters? Could you speak to that?
Absolutely. No, that's a great question. So, you are absolutely correct. The initial part of the fire was air assets, because they were the quickest we could get on scene. We had great response from the Colorado community. We had 250 folks, human beings, show up that first day from, from places all across the state of Colorado. The terrain, the wind conditions made it a little bit untenable to get into those situ, those, to deploy those ground crews, except in limited situations. And those limited situations included, at one point, the fire started backing down towards Sylvandale Ranch, and it got out of the rocks and got out of the trees and the, and the inclination, it wasn't as steep. And so, but it made that grassy run. Well, we were able to hold it, there's a, there's a road there and the canal, we were able to hold it there with ground crews. We're also able to hold, right now, we have ground crews that are up in Cedar Park area, trying to do some mitigation work and do, help some, save some homes there. There are trigger points where we're going to pull those folks out, though, because we, because, as you all know, it's a, it's a rough road to get in there. We don't want our firefighters, we've warned the citizens up there that it's time to evacuate, and we hope that they do so, but we are not going to trap our firefighters up there. So, in limited circumstances, and again, one of the resources that we're trying to protect is there's a fiber line along the bottom of Highway 34, a CenturyLink fiber line, that feeds one half of Estes Park's 911 system. And so, we're trying to keep the fire off those poles and things. So, only in unlimited situations, Commissioner, have we been able to deploy-
Are there hot-shot firefighters available to bring in?
They are going to come in with the Type One team that's coming in, they're the Critical Incident Management Team. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Sheriff.
Yes.
For answering my question. Lori, let's turn it over to you and kind of move towards, you know, our two decision points today.
All right. So, Lori Hodges, I am the Director of Emergency Management for Laramo County, so we're managing the Emergency Operations Center that has been activated for this incident. As the Sheriff mentioned, there's critical infrastructure that we're working on, so we do have utility providers in the Emergency Operations Center. They have a room where they're all coordinating together to try to solve any of these considerations regarding the fiber that the Sheriff mentioned, as well as any kind of 911 challenges that we might have, power outages that we might have, any kind of communications disruptions that we might have. So, that's a big part of what's going on in the Emergency Operations Center. Also, within their operations section, we have, obviously, Mass Care and Human Services. They're handling the whole sheltering and feeding operation. We do have two shelters activated right now, with a couple of other locations on standby in the event we have additional evacuations and the shelter cannot have that capacity. So, right now, the shelters are Foundations Church in Loveland and the Estes Park Events Complex in Estes Park. We've had about, you know, 31 people in Loveland overnight, we had 17 people at the Estes Park Events Complex. So, right now, we're definitely within capacity, but again, it's a moving event, so we have planned and pre-positioned for additional shelters. At those shelter sites, too, we have a staff that's able to provide assistance to people, whether they have medical assistance, whether they have people with disabilities, whether they need additional resources. We did do a big push today to get additional information to those shelters, to ensure that they know where to go for official information, because there's a lot of places people can go that's unofficial information right now, and we're just trying to push people to where the official messages are. Large animals are going to Weld County right now, to Island Grove, and then the Humane Society is taking all small animals. I did get a question prior to this meeting about, you know, how many people are evacuated. I'm going to give you contacts, that's not people, that's the number of contacts that Lita has touched, so maybe somebody has a landline and a cellphone, just keep this in mind. So, I'm going to give you some numbers and then tell you a recent update. So, before this last update with regard to the retreat, for mandatory evacuations for the Alexander Fire, it was about 4,022 contacts in mandatory evacuation and 595 involuntary. For the Stone Canyon Fire, there were about 554 contacts notified on the Laramo County side, not the Boulder County side. And then recently, we had the update of the retreat, which was a recent mandatory evacuation. So, that was another 482 additional contacts that wasn't in that number. So, hopefully, that gives you a little bit of an idea of how many people are evacuated out of the area. So, the reason that we're here today is because when this fire started on Monday, I started coordinating with Lorinda, County Manager, with regard to when we would want to trigger a local disaster declaration. And luckily, we have not had damages reported to date. The reason that I asked for the local declaration on Monday evening was because it does trigger local plans and procedures that allow us to move a little bit easily, easier through the process of procurement, through making sure that we have the right resources to be able to manage this event. So, we did make the decision Monday night, and then spoke with the board chair on Tuesday, and we got signature on a declaration on Tuesday morning for a local disaster declaration. That triggered a few things at the state. So, I did bring Noel here. Noel Curran is with the State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and so I was going to have Noel talk a little bit about the Fire Management Assistance Grant Declaration that the governor spoke about earlier today. The governor has verbally declared, and executive order is what it would be, but that would be a state declaration authorizing National Guard assets, as well as other state assets that are available for our use. So, us doing that local declaration helped with that, because if we hadn't locally declared, we probably wouldn't have been included into that executive order. So, now that we have that as well, that helped us to get state-level assets, as well as the local assets, so we're just ready and well-positioned for whatever comes our way. The Fire Management Assistance Grant is a first step in the FEMA declaration process. So, do you want to talk through that really quick, or do you?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Is your red light on?
I believe my red light is on.
All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, my name is Noel Curran. I'm a Field Operations Manager for the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Laramo County is one of seven counties that I cover, in addition to Boulder and Jeffco and all the other fires going on in the state. So, it's been a little bit busy. But as Lori mentioned, Laramo has followed such great processes in respects to knowing when to declare and positioning themselves appropriately to take advantage of state funding and federal funding. So, I just wanted to point that out. With that being said, as Lori mentioned, they were included in the governor's executive order. Similar to a state, a local declaration, what the governor's executive order does is it enables the State Emergency Operations Center to supply, order state resources to support the fire. It also opens procurement and contract and awards us for easier to navigate in as well. So, resource ordering, and this is going to go for the FMAG grant and, and the executive order, resource ordering and just documentation in general of in-kind expenses and damages are what's going to be extremely important moving, you know, from the beginning of the incident, which it's already occurring, to the end of the incident. This is, because FMAG was awarded today, it's, this is one conversation, this is a very initial preliminary conversation of what that's going to cover and what that's going to entail. So, typically, when FMAG is awarded, the federal government supports 75% of those costs, as high numbers that were mentioned, you know, we're hoping to get them, you know, strung into that grant, and then 25% is where the conversations will occur at the state level and at the county level, and what that looks like. Is it 12.5 each, or what? But again, those are more longer conversations. When we have more information about what resources were used, you know, we'll dive a little bit deeper into that. But I did want to mention some of the eligible costs in this grant, which is your equipment and your supplies, so fire engines, protective gear, related maintenance, personnel costs to include overtime, travel and per diem that might occur for folks coming in, firefighting resources, emergency work such as creating fire breaks, evacuation operations, operations and temporary repairs, communications, which is good, because we've got our eye on some critical infrastructure in respects to communications, food services, medical supplies, sanitation for the firefighter personnel, and administrative costs. So, it's, it's really got its arms around quite a bit, that I'm looking forward to taking advantage of and working through this process. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
So, the 80 million that the Sheriff mentioned, that's all considered emergency protective measures, and that's all wrapped into the Fire Management Assistance Grant Declaration. So, it really just covers emergency protective measures. It doesn't cover individuals who might lose property, it doesn't cover public infrastructure that might be lost. That would be a major disaster declaration, and we have not met any thresholds for that. So, really, right now, all that we've met is the Fire Management Assistance Grant Declaration, which is suppression assets and emergency protective measures. So, that's the EOC and the firefighting effort. And also, that 80 million is, includes the US Forest Service, too, so it's not the Laramo County price tag in, in any way, shape, or form. It's going to be divvied up, like the Sheriff said, in a cost share, and then with this declaration, it's divvied up some more. I mentioned the Emergency Fire Fund. The county pays into the Emergency Fire Fund every year, that's a Colorado fund. So, if that is triggered, that is also a way that we can get some additional funding from the state for this fire. So, there's multiple different funding streams that we're looking at, and we're looking at different thresholds for different programs.
Are there, are there any questions for Lori or Noel at this time? Yes, Commissioner.
I appreciate, thank you, Lori, thank you, Noel. I appreciate you spelling that out and what this level of this 80 million and what that means, and it's not quite triggered for private homeowners, but we haven't had any really loss of structures. So, I guess my question is, this is just for the suppression portion, and I'm sure you're already thinking about recovery, because that's what we do, and resiliency that we've been trying to do since Cameron Peak and even before that. So, with the watersheds, that's what I'm really concerned about, is the watersheds and the wildlife, and so this is, and we really impacted the Pooter Watershed with the Cameron Peak and a lot of the Big Thompson with the Cameron Peak, because it was higher up, and the streamside in the retreat, as you know, has been heavily impacted with that, and I've been there, walked it. I was just actually there driving around two weeks ago with a pancake breakfast through the entire area, checking things out. So, this, my question is, knowing that we're looking at some, maybe some hefty recovery costs to, especially to stabilize and protect the watersheds again, and thank goodness, a lot of those barrier bags are in place, but I'm just, I saw, just saw them again. So, when, we're already starting that work, but there's some things we have to do, thinking before, I mean, I'm already thinking about spring runoff, right? We have, there'll be a lot of work to do. And I just got back from Clement Springs and the Grizzly Fire and seeing all that they did between their fire and their runoff, and how they had to do a lot of work. I got to explore all that. So, my mind's already thinking way ahead, so what does that look like?
The first step in the process is damage assessments. So, as this fire progresses, if we have structure loss or public infrastructure loss of any kind, our damage assessment teams will start gathering up that data. There are different programs for each of those, so we'll be looking at thresholds for those. Part of that damage assessment, though, as well, is going to be a risk assessment, much like we did for the Cameron Peak Fire, which is where we bring people out to look at the soil, look at the burn severity, see really how bad is bad, and which areas are really bad, and then which of those areas lead into those drainages, right, that we had with Black Hollow, Sheep Creek. And once we know that information, that will then lead the recovery effort. But we're not going to be able to do that right away, but that will be part of the damage assessment process. Once we have all that information, we do work with multiple partners throughout the county, the Fire Shed, the Watershed Coalitions, the Conservation Service, our Conservation Corps as well, and they all start to get together, and we create a recovery collaborative, which is all those groups looking at every aspect of recovery and them determining what are the key priorities for recovery and the timelines, and then we really just start moving through that. So, for the board's notice or whatever, I think probably sometime next week-ish, I can come back before the board to kind of start talking about where we're currently at, really, with the fire. It, it might be too early at that point, but where we're currently at with the fire, what we're thinking as far as what that recovery might be looking like, and what that budget might need to be for us to be able to start moving forward with that. But again, it might be too early next week, it all just depends on what the conditions are and how we're doing with the fire, but we'll keep you guys updated. And maybe a weekly update is needed for the board anyway, as a public meeting, I don't know, so.
I just want to say my heartfelt gratitude and my utmost respect and high regard for all of you. Thank you for all that you're doing, protect our homes and people and our, our beautiful landscapes, it just means a lot, and it's been an interesting few days, so thank you.
I have a question. Regarding the, the federal management assistance grant and the ratio 75-25 for that split, it's my understanding that that's not always set in stone, or am I wrong?
Well, there's always gray area in many grant programs, but for FMAG, the 75-25 is standard.
Standard.
Yeah. Again, the 25% that falls on the state and the local, so that's where those numbers can fluctuate, but-
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Lori, how do we proceed with discussion of the resolution? I think that's pretty important.
Okay. So, yeah, the board chair did sign the resolution yesterday, and with that, we need the full board to ratify that resolution. I did put within the resolution for today that there isn't an expiration date to this, because what we learned from Cameron Peak Fire was we had it expire after 30 days, and we had to extend it a few times. So, this one is just until the board rescinds the declaration, it will be active, and then we will come back before the board, once it's time for that declaration to no longer be active. I don't know if Bill Rasu has anything you want to add on, on the declaration.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bill Rasu, Laramo County Attorney. I think you've covered it all. The board just needs to take action within seven days of the chair's unilateral declaration, so if you do so today, we would meet that deadline.
And the reason that we, that we made sure that the declaration was good until rescinded is, according to state statute, if there wasn't a date in there, it would expire automatically after seven days, and so we would like that just to continue, so this resolution would cover that extension.
Thank you, colleagues. Are there any questions from my Commissioner colleagues? So, then-
Well, I just, is the first item the, is the restriction, fire restrictions?
That's the order, but I think we're doing the declaration now.
Oh, okay.
The declaration.
Okay.
And then we'll get into the fire restrictions. Is that okay?
That's, that's fine, I was just looking at the agenda.
And so, at this time, I think where this works is I'll ask Commissioner- And so at this time, I think where this works is I'll ask Commissioner Stevens to offer the motion to approve the resolution regarding the local disaster emergency declaration. And I believe I've been instructed that once we approve it, I need to say what time it is that we actually do that. So Commissioner Stevens, you're on.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move approval of the resolution declaring a local disaster emergency related to the Alexander Mountain Fire.
Mr. Rasu, is that a proper motion?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three to zero at 4:04 PM. I believe we can move on to the next item on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes. As soon as the declaration is signed and we get a copy, we send it to the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and then it's recorded by the clerk and recorder as well as the state.
And actually, I'm going to change the time to 4:05 because I'm about to sign it, and it is.
We'll still take it.
It's my OCD, you know. Please proceed, Lori, or the sheriff.
Yes, please. So I actually have two items, and the fire restriction is the first one. And it's probably, I don't know if it needs to be in an open meeting or not. The second item, and I'm sorry to throw the curve ball, is at 11:59 last night, we did delegate authority of fire control to the state, and that requires the signature of the board chair as well as the sheriff. So I have that with me, and we can talk about that secondarily or offline. I'm just looking for some guidance on that. Here is the document I will hand to our county attorney, and he can look at as we talk. So let's talk about the fire restrictions, if you don't mind, first. And this was the discussion that I was having earlier. I wanted to make, some of the language as far as the definition of what an outside container is or a permanent container is always comes up when we get asked to enforce these. Like, for example, you go camping at Hermit Park, which is a lovely facility, and they have the metal fire grates that are around. Is that considered a permanent structure to contain fire or not? And that's because that's part of the definition, and so I want to make that clear. So our whispered conversation, I asked our county attorney, the intent of what I'm asking for is a pretty significant, I don't take it lightly, restriction where it would only allow you to burn your fireplace in your home if you want to do that in August. All the more power to you. That's fantastic, right? But then it would, but would allow you to grill using gas-powered grill equipment at your home or in a campsite if you want. But that was the only thing that I would like to be allowed at this point, considering our preparedness level, the weather that we're at. So fireplaces in your home, you can grill in your backyard with your gas-powered grill, and you can grill at a campsite with a gas-powered grill, but not a charcoal grill, not a wood-powered grill. Your fire pits would not be allowed, those kinds of things. And that's a pretty significant restriction that I know none of us take lightly. But I think our situation in Northern Colorado warrants that. Some of them, I apologize, I was text messaging back and forth. My friend, Sheriff Johnson from Boulder County is asking for air assets to come from the Alexander Mountain Fire to go to the new fire that's just popped up in the last two hours. And again, we've been very blessed and fortunate, our partnerships, but both Boulder County and Larimer County, I can talk to Larimer County specifically, are spread pretty thin at this point to address another fire in our community, to keep our citizens safe.
If I may, just to clarify, Sheriff, so in the proposed resolution, the matters that are prohibited are use of combustible devices as defined in our code, contained open fires, oh, that's what's been updated, I think, uncontained open fires, use of fireworks and public fireworks displays. Is that correct? I just got three versions of this. I want to make sure.
And I understand, and that's, I take total ownership, because I didn't know that we were, I wanted to make sure we were prohibiting what and allowing what I wanted to be prohibited and allowed. But it sounds like you have the right copy, Commissioner. Thank you.
And it looks like it would be extended through August 31st of this year. And then we would have the option of either rescinding it or continuing it, depending on the conditions.
Absolutely.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Commissioner Shadak McNally, anything?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask a question. We get a lot of questions from residents regarding the, you know, U.S. Forest Service restrictions have been in place for a while, and then we have these restrictions. Can you explain how those restrictions overlap, interact? What does that mean? And there's different restrictions in place, and what is this, this is just for unincorporated areas of the county? And so I just want to kind of, for the public's knowledge, try to explain some of those nuances and differences, if you wouldn't mind, Sheriff.
No, absolutely. Great question. So you're absolutely right. And what I, one of the text messages I received five minutes from walking the door is that the Forest Service is going to a total ban. So no combustible, you couldn't, you can't grill with gas-powered, you can't have fires at all. And that's going to be happening soon, is my understanding. Ours is a little more lenient, but it applies to Larimer County unincorporated jurisdiction only, does not apply to the incorporated areas, but it also applies to things that fall outside the Forest Service. The Forest Service total ban would take priority.
Can I add one thing? Estes Valley Fire also, as of today, went into stage one fire restrictions as well.
Okay.
So when they have a tighter total ban, especially in some of those areas that are outside of their jurisdictions, you know, I think you've heard me talk about this before, different quadrants, different conditions, you know, further, you go certain areas, it gets drier in certain places, and Larimer County is a little wetter. So will we keep evaluating now that we have these restrictions, if we have these, as we go forward with these restrictions in place, will we keep an eye on that with whether we need to increase or change our fire restrictions? Or are you going to be evaluating that as we go forward with conditions changing?
No, absolutely. I mean, that's a continual evaluation. If our predictive models on the weather don't hold true, and all of a sudden we get four inches of rain over the next week, because we don't want four inches of rain in the next hour, we want it over the next week, because that causes other problems, right? But if that changes, and it changes the whole landmark for the Alexander Fire, what's going on, their preparedness level and everything else. And that was hyperbolic, but yes, absolutely. Every single day, we take a look at the conditions, the weather patterns, personnel, resources available, and make that determination. And anytime we can come back to the Commissioners and talk about that, or rescind it, if you want to rescind it earlier, or we can talk about increasing the ban to a total, or restrictions to a total ban, if you want.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Stevens, any questions, comments, observations?
Just where can people find, if they want to ask you questions about what that means? And I mean, it's quite clear what you said is that it would allow for grilling with gas outside and indoor fireplaces, and that's basically it that would be allowed. But if they did have questions, they would contact your office, or you'd have that, we'll have that on websites and stuff, so people understand what's happening.
Yes. So as soon as it's approved, we're working with CDOT to get signs placed in the county to make sure the public knows. We'll post it very prominently on our website as well. We'll message that through our Public Information Office.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, colleagues. Thanks for the questions. I don't have any at this time. So I believe we can move forward with the motion. Commissioner Shadak McNally, would you be kind enough to offer that motion?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. May I look at your resolution? Is that the proper title?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the resolution declaring fire restrictions in Larimer County.
May I have the resolution?
Is that okay, Commissioner? Thanks.
Thank you. That is a proper motion. Colleagues, any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three to zero at 4:13 PM. I'm signing the document.
Thank you, Commissioners.
What's the curve ball? You got a third thing?
No, that is the curve ball, the document that the vast county attorney talking about with the delegation of authority to the state.
Of course. Great. So then, is there any, go ahead, Bill, please. I'm sorry. I must be missing something.
So with respect to this assumption of fire control duty document, it does designate that the state has assumed control, it looks like, as of first thing this morning. Is that accurate?
Yep.
And the board's signature on it is required, but I don't believe that it will affect the time or the date of the assumption. So today's meeting was published specific to the fire restrictions and the disaster declaration. So because I don't believe the assumption will be affected whether you sign this today or after you give proper notice, that would be my recommendation, would be to give at least 24 hours' advance notice. This would be an agenda item, and then you can sign it at that time, unless that causes you concerns with the assumption, or any of you, I suppose.
It doesn't cause me concern. This is my first one.
Right.
Yay. I know. What I wanted to learn on.
The question is, is in the past, we've been able to have the board chair sign, much like a declaration, and then have it ratified later? Could we do that with this one?
I think that you could. You could do that. And really, the consequence of addressing an issue that's not publicly noticed is that you need to correct that.
Right.
By doing it again with correct notice. There is an emergency exception as well to the 24 hours' notice. You're supposed to give it when you can, and it's required for you to give it unless there's an emergency that mandates that you act without that much advance notice. So if there's any concern that this needs to be approved by the board right now, or else it will affect the ability to transfer control for the fire, then I would suggest that you qualify that as an emergency. You act on it now, and then we'll schedule it for a future meeting for you to ratify it a second time.
So from the subject matter experts, is there any concern about the timing of the transfer of control of the fire operations?
So what we can do is we can check with, is it U.S. Forest Service or DFPC?
DFPC.
We can check with DFPC. If they're okay with us waiting until the next meeting that you guys have, no problem. If they say we really need that signature, maybe we do the board chair, and then we do the ratifying at a public meeting. Would that work?
I think the board needs to act on it.
Okay.
So may I make a suggestion, Mr. Chair? Can I just say, I feel like this is an emergency, an emergency situation, and go ahead and ask us to make a motion, to go ahead and sign this an emergency situation and approve this for the board chair to sign. And then we can also follow up by putting out, because I do think we can add it to the agenda, to go ahead and add it to the agenda for consent on Tuesday, so we can cover both bases. I know you guys have a lot going on your plate right now, and I think this would be great to have this peace of mind for you, that in my opinion, would be great to go ahead and just have this covered, and then also have it on the agenda for next week to make sure we kind of cover both bases. And that's just kind of what I was thinking. I would just like to suggest that. Thank you.
So I would appreciate, there are a couple of suggestions on the table. I would like to hear from the sheriff, or perhaps Lori or Noel. What is your recommendation on our course of action?
So, before I get to that, I apologize. I won't take the liberty. My, no concern. I think operationally, things are going to progress as they are, whether this gets signed today or not, right? We've already done that. The state's heavily involved. There may be a nuance. I'm looking to my right a little bit, again, my first opportunity to do this. I don't know if the timing delay impacts the cost-sharing agreement with the state, and now we accrue more costs because the state, right? So I guess I would ask that you, the board, ratify it, sign it now, and if we made an error in light of the circumstances.
In light of all the information, that's what I would recommend, that I can sign it. And then, Lori, you could follow up with the folks. And then we can either, you know, in 24 hours, do a special meeting to, quote, "make it official," or if we have the time to wait for our next administrative matters. But that's on Tuesday, August 6th, I believe.
Yeah, once the board chair signs it, we will have met our obligation, I believe, with DFPC. It would really just be you guys coming back to a meeting on Tuesday to make sure it's formally noticed and that there's time for public comment, if there is any, I would assume.
Yes, Commissioner.
So we need to make a motion now to, as a board. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion, that I feel this is an emergency situation, and I ask the board to move, to direct the board chair to sign this assumption of fire control duty, defined as the Larimer County Sheriff may delegate the assumption of fire control and fiscal management for a specific fighter. Fire, as defined in Colorado Revised Statute 30-10-513, authority for the controlling of the Alexander Mountain Fire burning in Larimer County. And any suppression, all suppression resources as described in this cost-share agreement while in the state responsibly status. Mutual aid ended on 7/3/24 at 2/3/59.
So, yeah, I got all that. The only suggestion I would offer is I don't believe we typically have motions that include the work, the words, "I feel it's an emergency." I think we just moved to adopt this because, whatever the rest of it is, I don't feel comfortable putting in the words, "I feel this is an emergency, therefore..."
I think that the commentary about the emergency can help just explain why the board is choosing.
Then the motion can read, "Move to approve the signing of this document because it's determined to be an emergency in order to do the transfer of operations."
I think that would be fine.
Do you get that, Lindsay? We'll come back to you.
That was a resounding yes.
Okay. I mean, the concept is that we are approving this motion to sign this document so that the transfer of operations can occur, and we're doing that based on our understanding that it's an emergency. That is the motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three to zero. You got anything else, Sheriff?
I have no more curveballs, but it sounds like our Director of OEM does.
Do you have anything else?
No more curveballs. I would like to, if I could, provide some information to the public about how to get information on this fire. So the best ways to get information, we have a joint information center that is set up from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It's run through the sheriff's office. That phone number is 970-980-2500. So people can call if they have questions about what's going on with the fire, if they have questions about what to do with their animals, whatever it is. That phone number is available to folks. There's also the ability, if you have a cell phone with text messaging ability and you want updates on this fire as they come in, you can text LCEVAC to 888-777, and you'll get all updates that come out about the fire as they come out. You'll also get those mandatory evacuation notices. Anything else you'll get, if the shelter changes, where to go with your animals. So it's not just the evacuation notices. This is the non-emergency stuff that we're sending to everybody regarding the fire, as well as the emergency stuff. And then also, we do have a website that's set up. So the Larimer County website, so it's larimer.gov/Alexander-Mountain-Fire. And that's updated all the time with resources available to the public. But again, if you have any questions or concerns about anything, please contact the Joint Information Center. And if there's somebody who has a need that can't be met by the Joint Information Center, they are in direct contact with the Emergency Operations Center, and we have the resources in that room to be able to help people. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Lori. Colleagues, is there anything else? Thank you for your extraordinary service, for putting yourselves on the line, for all the very good work that you're doing to keeping everyone safe and protecting our resources. At 4:22 PM, we are adjourned.